August 25th, school board meeting to session. Please write for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Secretary, are we all here? Wonderful. All right, proof of public notice.
The agenda was shared with the Kiwanee Star News. It was also shared with the Elgoma Public Library, posted on our district website, as well as posted at both building locations.
Wonderful. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Lonnie, seconded by Jeremy. All those in favor of approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on, approval of our consent agenda. Moved by Mike, seconded by Shannon to approve the consent agenda. I was gonna point out, there's a lot of things in there and we're adding in there some personnel activities, so just wanted to make you aware of that. Everyone had a chance to look at it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Sorry, who approved, who seconded?
Michael, Mike approved, Shannon second. And we're right on time with our board recognition of the Destination Imagination Team.
So, welcome, come on in kids. So this is something new that we are starting. We each month would like to highlight, recognize a student group for some of their great achievements, and we thought DI would be a great place to start, given that you guys did so well last year. So, if you guys wanna come have a seat up here at the front. Do a quick introduction of who you guys are, and share a little bit about what your experiences are with DI, if you can.
Okay, I'll start. Hi, I'm Gwynellin Bennett, and I was Tommy. I've been in DI for seven years, I'm going to college next week.
Wow, congratulations.
I'm Ailey St. John, I've done DI for four years, and I'm intending to do it for the rest of high school.
What grade are you in?
I'm gonna be a sophomore.
Going to be a sophomore, you're still very young, okay.
And I'm Danielle Bennett, I was their coach for two years in a row for the improv team at the high school level.
Thank you.
Any questions for us?
Do you guys wanna talk about your experience with DI and what it looked like this year? Because you guys had a very successful year.
Well, this is my first year going to globals. I've been to state level almost every year that I've done it, except for one year where we had to drop because of COVID regulations. But I, this is my first year going all the way to globals, and this was my third year on an improv team. We nearly did it last year as a team of two, and we did it this year as a team of three.
I've been fortunate enough to advance to the global final level three times, and it was, I love going every single year, it's just like, it's like the one place in the world where you go and everyone surrounding you knows exactly what DI is. It's very fun.
Kansas City globals is something else entirely. I don't know if any of you have ever done DI, but Ailey is right, everybody there, it's a massive convention center. Everybody there is DI focused. Knowing, everybody knows exactly what the instant challenge is, or what improv is, or what the tech challenges are, you know, and everything that it goes with it, and props and costumes, and you'll see people walking around fully dressed in costumes, you know, with makeup, their hair, and just crazy, you know, carrying things around and everything. So it is a completely different experience from anything I've ever done, and I've done a lot in my life. So it's definitely a worthwhile experience. I think it has taught these kids, these two, as well as Brendan, who's that here? And the younger kids as well, I think it's taught them a lot of creativity and team building, and brought them out of their shells. Most of these kids are what you would classify as nerds, I guess you would say. You know, they love tech, they love science, they love language and musical theater, and performing and everything, so these are your athletes usually. But it's really brought them out of their shell and made them more vocal and stronger individuals.
I think DI needs a lot more recognition, especially because I think it's very That's a hard to remember, because it's Brendan, Brendan, come on in. I think, because DI itself isn't exactly looked at as a sport. Obviously, it's not exactly a sport, but it's extremely time extensive, and it takes a lot to do, and has a very similar effect to sports in a group setting. I'm sure none of us can, you might be able to, but some of us have gone on seven hour practices. There, if you know of Viva Com Everdine and her mother, Nicole and Everdine, their teams have hosted seven to eight hour practices yearly. That is something that is very common in the DI sector, especially for the fine arts challenge. It takes a lot, and you can tell that everyone about it is super passionate. And I think it reflects well on our time management skills, our dedication to what we're passionate about, and more importantly, our dedication to our team members, and what we're willing to do, and what we will be willing to need to get as far as we need to go. It's a dedication thing, you need to have a lot of motivation to survive a DI season, especially in something as extensive as our fine art sector. We're very lucky as our, as an improv team, that we never need to do something that long, but there was a lot of hours of research, and practice, and study, and a lot of, I would say, stress. There's a lot of stress management involved in DI.
Yeah, and all those hours are, in addition to that, we also have to like fundraise, and like raise enough money so that if we do advance to globals or states, that we have the funds to be able to continue on and perform our skit. And really, all the hard, all the hard work, I would say, really pays off, because like just performing in general is like awesome, but specifically in the context of DI, it's really rewarding. Everything is worth it when you get onto a stage and you see everyone so happy to see you, and be happy with yourself, knowing that you and your team are the stars of the show, for as long as you're on that stage. Brendan, do you wanna introduce yourself, and how long you've been in DI?
I'm Brendan Brom, I've been in DI one year. This is my first year.
You're peer pressured, can you? Awesome.
I personally really liked it, obviously only been in it one year. I don't know as much as these two, but I enjoyed it. And I liked the, I just liked pretty much everything about it. I liked the team building, I liked the research, I liked the, I even did, I ran into a couple of times, there were only a few times where I had to, like, where we ran into a couple of hiccups, but I really enjoyed the, having to have the dedication to do it, to be honest. Had a great team, and it was an awesome experience.
I wanna thank you guys for taking the time to invite us when you guys had your public performance. That went a long way, because it put DI on the map with us. We had a tangible invite, like welcoming us, and that was really fun, for, you know.
Because I went and it was my first experience with DI. I've heard about it and everything, but never been to it, so I was like, what is this? And you guys, I'll answer the question I was gonna ask, is what impact has it had on you, your years of involvement, just in general, and then in school? You related to that quite well, you know, very much saying how it's built everything up. And so that was wonderful, thank you. I mean, you guys knew what we might be asking, your improv skills were very, were showing. So now, what advice, I do one more question, what advice would you give younger kids to get involved?
Don't be scared.
Yeah.
Everyone there is as weird, and as scared, and as confused as you are, and when you get out there, everyone just wants to have a good time.
Yeah, I would say definitely, like take what you're doing as seriously without being too serious about it. Like, do what you're supposed to be doing, don't like slack off the entire time. But I'd say, don't take it so seriously that you're panicking every time something goes wrong. Like, just have fun with it.
So, I wanna say when my daughter, the first year that she can enter, we attempted, unsuccessfully, but we attempted. It takes a lot of dedication, because I believe everything is led by the students. The leaders, they can't even suggest, hey, why don't you use Reon for the costume? Because everything is them, which to me is even more exceptional, because kind of the leader is a filler. You know, you're there.
Which is there to make sure they don't crush other.
The principle is that, the principle that she's referencing in DI community is known as interference, which is no adults or outside team members are allowed to influence how a project goes, how a play is done, or anything really. They're not allowed to do research, help with costumes, help with sign, help with any props.
They can't shop.
They cannot shop for us, we have to go with them.
The only thing that the coach is allowed to do is educate them on how to do something. So if they are making their own costumes and they don't know how to sew, you can show them how to sew, but they have to actually do the cast, sew the costumes.
They're not allowed to help sew costumes.
Or paint, or use the tools, or whatever. It's gotta be completely led by the team. And the coach is just there to educate them and make sure that you don't need any hospital visits. Or, yeah, we file the paperwork, and that's pretty much it. But one thing about DI compared to sports teams is that sports really only have like a three month season. DI is all school.
Depending on.
Depending upon how you do at regional, state, and then going to globals. So it takes a lot more dedication than what a sports team would, because you're done in three, you know, in sports, football, you're done in eight weeks, or basketball, you're done in four months. So it takes a lot more dedication, a lot more planning, and just time management skills than what a sports, being a member of a sports team would be.
And Danielle, I know you put a lot of time into it, so I don't mean for it to sound like I diminished your role by any means.
No, and honestly, I was, and the only reason, Tommy was like, Mom, I really want to spend more time with you, and I want to continue doing DI, but can you coach our team, because I don't like our coach? And I was like, the only way I'm coaching is if we do improv, because I don't have the time to commit to doing anywhere from a six to a ton of more practice, one to two times a week. Besides the fact that I don't have all the skills that are needed for those fine arts, those technical and scientific challenges. So I was fine with doing improv, because there's very minimal, what do you plan for in improv? It's all research. So that's gotta be them. So it was me just kinda leading, like, okay, this is what we gotta do today. And then, you know, so we did usually one practice a week for two hours a week. So, and we only, we started in October, because the year before we had started earlier, and Ailey and Tommy had got kinda burnt out by the time state rolled around. So I was like, okay, we're gonna wait until, actually, it was almost Thanksgiving before we started. Because we didn't have to do costumes this year, and we didn't have to do any props, whereas the year before, we did have costumes.
And we have a single prop.
And a single prop. This year, there was no, there was nothing. So it was a lot more research this year.
Yeah, we built our team sign on my living room floor.
So.
Both years.
Both years. Yeah. I have, I have the sign in my room.
I also have the sign in my room, we split the sign in two, because I'm taking part of it with me to college.
Very Ted Lasso of you.
I got a question. First of all, congratulations on making it to globals, that's pretty exciting. But you did say something that really kinda struck me was that DI should get more recognition. And I completely agree with that. I think between academics, DI, other curricular activities outside of sports, because it always seemed like the sports get all the glory, I get that. Do you have any recommendations on what, as a board, we can do? Or as a district, to recognize DI students more?
I think we should be able to get the word out more, unlike the morning announcements and such, about what's going on in DI, like, we host regionals here almost every year. And I think it'd be, and we have our community dinner here every year. So I think it would be cool to like have a bit more word about it on our morning announcements, getting it out to more parents and such as an option. Because when you join a school, you're thinking, oh, there's the sports teams, and then there's like one or two outsider clubs. DI is a huge thing, and it doesn't feel like it gets as much recognition here as it does in other districts and other communities. Like, I'm sure Kansas City has the huge, like, DI program, because they host globals there every year. And I think it would, I think it would just be helpful. I know that I never did sports, I tried, but I have, I have physical problems that restricts me from doing a lot of sports and a lot of physical movement. DI was a way for me to get out there and make friends, and dedicate myself to something. And it gave me a community when I really felt like I didn't have one, especially after COVID.
I think DI should be promoted more as an option. Like, there is the sports teams, and the musical is always like, oh yes, musical triumph this year. I think that there should be, it should be, like, students should, and teachers should be talking about DI more.
I know when the first year she was eligible, we got flyers that were sent home. That's how I knew about it, but I don't think I've seen a flyer sent. And she's in eighth grade now.
Sorry, Sarah, I have some ideas. I don't know if they, I could talk about them now, or we could talk to Jesse about them independently. To get the word out more, and potentially get more interaction and more members into DI. Since COVID, DI has been dying off. A lot of people, I feel like, after COVID, they were very more secular into their homes. And they, I know sports participation dropped off, and musical, and just club involvement, extracurriculars really dropped off after COVID. And that isn't just here, that is nationwide. And DI has also seen that happen. So it's, I have some ideas that I'd be happy to talk to you about. But usually, when they get into the middle school, high school level, they get so involved with jobs and sports and doing well in school, because maybe they're potentially looking at college, and just the time management, the stress, DI is one of those first things that fall off. So we really, this was our only high school team this year, of three individuals. And in the past, we've had two teams, but we did have a second team, but it fell apart. And as far as I know, I know Tommy has graduated, but Ailey and Brendan are planning on continuing on, I believe. And I think they have recruited another one of their friends.
We have two of our friends.
So, maybe, so they haven't committed a hundred percent, but I think that it's definitely a worthwhile program to continue putting focus into, and hopefully promote and grow.
I will say that I think it is important that we need to get DI better more. Because I know there was a lot of students, like who I was, where I didn't really have any friends, and I didn't have a group, or a sport, or a club that belonged to. And DI was one of the only things that didn't stop me from pushing to drop out entirely into online school.
You don't need any special skills to be in DI. And athletics, you do, and musical, you need to be able to sing, or dance, or something, you know, you need to have some sort of talent to participate. And a lot of our other extracurriculars that get recognition in DI, you really don't.
All you need for DI is a will to show up, and imagination. And you really need to talk.
Imagination.
You have all the inside jokes.
I get what you're saying, but don't, don't cut yourself short. When you talk about improv, and I'm a huge improv comedy fan. And it's not easy for one to get on stage in front of people and do anything, whether it's singing, joking, dancing, whatever. So don't cut yourself short, this is not easy.
I happen to know that young lady has been in DI this whole time, and carry a part-time job while she was doing it. So it takes, it's a lot of dedication, and I'm proud of you kids.
I also graduated with a three point, I believe a three point eight or nine.
Nice, congratulations.
So, you can do it, you just have to have the dedication. It was hard, I think this year was the hardest year for me, not only because it was my last year, because I'm going to college, and my college does not have a DI program, but because.
Yeah.
I should, don't give me ideas.
Where are you going to school?
You live in Parkside, in Kenosha.
Kenosha, Wisconsin.
There you go. So you start the team now, and then they'll come join you in a couple years, right?
Yeah. Oh my gosh, yeah, but I'm going for forensic psychology. I actually considered English because of improv, but I decided against that. But I met some of the most amazing people. I met Ailey through DI last year, and we've been best friends ever since.
Very nice.
That's awesome.
Well, thank you guys for coming. We wanted to recognize you for all that you have done, and your success in your Destination Imagination years, and good luck in college, and good luck you two for continuing.
And invite us back next year.
Can we grab a picture with them and the board?
Sure.
So maybe if the board can go, kinda stand in the middle, and I'll have you guys come up and stand right in front there?
Absolutely.
Can I capture?
Why don't ladies sit in the front?
We're gonna have to stand. We wanted it this way, it shows.
Can we get everybody in?
I'm too tall. Come on three, one, two, three. All right, thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready, guys. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
All right, have a great day, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
You may open.
Have a good night.
Bye.
All right, next on the agenda is the board correspondent report by me. So, as I said earlier, there were only two items on my list until I went to WASB, and there's a lot more now. So the legislative session is going to resume in September. And right now, the legislative calendar has reserved September 2nd through the 11th. So I'm just gonna read over things that are going, because there's quite a few. And if you have any questions, you can ask me about them further. So, new legislation that was introduced over the summer. They want to rescind the governor's 400-year veto. So, he vetoed the, the money where there would be $325 added to the per pupil adjustment until 24, 25, and the legislature wants to eliminate that. And the formula, beginning with the calculation of the school districts for the 2027, 28 year, and that would not be very good. There's one on immunization waivers. There's a school bus safety package. With school bus drivers over 70, or with medical conditions, won't have to test for their CDL every two years, they're gonna expand it to four. Equipment of school buses with audiovisual recording devices. That's a new thing that's going before, that came out during the summer. And driver education instruction related to school bus safety. There have been a lot more accidents out there, so they wanna make that something in their education. Now, before the budget, there was some legislation that went through, and there are several barrels that they think that will have a chance to get passed. One is removing impediments to rehiring retired workers, and it applies to all public sector employees. The higher education data collection, and requiring school boards to distribute information. Amending the academic excellence scholarship, so that's something they're hoping is gonna get passed. Student health and safety mandates, sexual abuse education. Cardiac emergency plans and AED installation. Clean drinking water, that was a big one with the whole lead thing that went down in the Milwaukee area. I believe that was something Senator Jacques from our area put up there. And prohibiting certain school lunch ingredients in foods. The only issue that WASB has with this is these are all unfunded mandates. So if the, some of these fall upon the schools, it's going to be, how do we now account for that? I don't know if every water fountain in this school has a filter on it to filter out the lead, but that would be something some school districts may have an issue. Notice I said water fountain, not bubbler. And then some pre-budget legislation that likely won't pass, but we're gonna watch. And that's the new restrictions on the school referendum, the information on property tax impact on the ballot. Eliminating recurring referenda, removing dollars raised through the referenda. Altering the amounts of funds in the equalization aid installment, they wanted to move that, remember, to 25% for each installation, and instead of how they have it now, I think it's a 10, a 15, and a 30, and then some obscure number. And that's what impacts, it makes it harder financially for us to move things. So that might not go through, which is unfortunate. Cursive writing is probably gonna get the ax, again, I think that's bad. School access federally chartered youth organizations and military recruiters is probably gonna get deleted. School safety grants, and transgender athletics. Prohibiting students born biologically male from participating in female athletics. So those were some of the things that were highlighted. WASB also has a new resource where it compares the actual changes in revenue limits prior to inflationary districting, so that just shows how the cost of living has not been added into the funding that goes into schools, and it shows the discrepancy with that. So that's something that interesting that you might wanna check out on the WASB. And that is my report. Next up is the board CISA 7 report by Treasurer Chrissy O'Conne.
So, sorry, there was no July report. I was ill and missed the CISA meeting, and then I wasn't here in July either. We are working through the changes to our director. So Erin Alteski is our new CISA 7 director. So imagine if you had a new leader in your district or on your board. So we're just doing a lot of learning about one another, and then giving feedback of what does the board need to see? What's too much, what's not enough, where can we help him succeed? So they held a Bait and Road employee retreat to kinda build their relationship as well. So everyone who works right there at the CISA 7 office had a retreat this past month. They did the five voices of leadership, worked on their strategic plan, and how to push forth to all of their other employees that are in the field, in the schools, in our districts. The youth apprentice program continues to be one of the biggest pushes and one of the most successful areas of CISA 7. The contract amounts are going up for that. The budget amount coming out of the state surprisingly is going up for that. So a lot of great success there, they're hiring more people, getting all of those people into the districts to help build those relationships between the community and the students, so that we can get more students working, and help with the labor gap in several districts as well. As we've been reporting, the contracted days with CISA 7 are down, but they're going to keep working on that, keep the communication up with the districts, and try to continue selling, because they need to make their money as well. Erin had an interesting fact out there, that Wisconsin is 26th in the nation, even after our budget passed, in per pupil spending, and we are continually declining. So kind of a depressing little stat there, to be in the bottom half of the 50 states. And then, because two of the members of our board are also on the WASB board, we usually talk a great deal about that at the CISA meetings. So Erin is the president, and he, of WASB, and he was supposed to be going to Washington DC to do some lobbying. That is kind of up in the air yet, because of all the uncertainty and things that were going on in DC with National Guard, police, all that. So I don't know if he actually got to go. It was still up in the air as of our meeting two weeks ago. And then, I've sent this message to Jesse, but new process on the hotel for the conference in Milwaukee. People would go gobble up hotel rooms for the conference, and then never really have that many school board members going. So now you don't get the rate unless you have a registration to the conference. So you have to register, and then you get a special link that will actually allow you to book a hotel with the conference price, so that no one's sucking up the hotel rooms for actual attendees.
It was cold block last year.
Yeah, so that's all from CISA.
Wasn't that bad.
Thank you, Chrissy. Is there anyone that signed in for public comment?
No.
Okay, moving on to the president announcement. All right, first off, we, in our consent agenda, we approved the donations. I would like to just call out and make notice that Precision Machine Incorporated donated $2,500 to the Elgoma School District volleyball program, and an additional $2,500 to the Elgoma School District boys' basketball program. So thank you very much. So thank you very much Precision Machine Incorporated. That was very, very nice. This morning Shannon, Chrissy and I had the wonderful opportunity of joining the school district and welcoming back the staff, the administrators and all the support personnel. And it was fun to see everyone, to see everyone coming back. It reminded me of those first date jitters and even though they're not with the kids, but you're just so excited and it's nice to be back. You do miss summer, but you're like, okay, this is what we're here for. It's time to get ready. So with that, um, the board kind of came up with a little welcome that we would like to present. So on behalf of the school board, we extend a welcome back to school. We hope you had a wonderful and restful summer filled with joy and opportunities to recharge. We are incredibly excited to begin this new academic year with all of you. This year, we remain committed to fostering an environment where every student feels valued, challenged, and supported to reach their fullest potential. To our dedicated educators and staff, your dedication and commitment to our student success are the foundation of our district. We deeply appreciate your expertise, passion, and tireless efforts, which are the true engine of our students' growth and achievement. To our students, we encourage you to embrace the possibilities of the new year with curiosity and enthusiasm. Remember that every day presents a new chance to learn, grow, and make a positive difference. We also want to thank our parents and community partners for your unwavering support. Your involvement is crucial to our collective success and plays a vital role in creating a positive and thriving learning environment for all. Together as one team with one goal, we will forward to your growth, discovery, and achievement. Let's make this a successful and memorable, 2025-26 school year. All right, moving on then administrative reports.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a update from district finances as well as referendum finances. Um, I'm excited to share progress that we've been making on our construction. Got lots of pictures to show you of the progress that we've been making. And then just kind of recap of the festivities from today from our staff in service. So let's have Amber start with our budget summary report.
Sweet team, pretty short and sweet this round. We're only one month in, a month of July, a very personal, not a lot's going on. We got a little bit of interest earnings in, the childcare fees and wellness center fees are all the only revenues we received in July. And our expenses in July are mainly just paid for the benefits. We did pay the remainder of the CPLA curriculum, so that is now paid in full. And there's some summer maintenance projects that were taking place outside of the referendum work. So they sanded and refinished the gym floor down in the elementary building. And some classroom sanding got done as well, so both paid in full. And then we do have a couple of contracts for services throughout the 25-26 school year. One of those contracts does require a semester payment upfront, so that payment has gone off the door as well. Then moving on to our other funds. For non-referendum work, we did pass the capital improvement plan last year, because it's a 10-year plan. So this 25-26 would be year two in that 10-year plan. In the plan, we had a replacement for a bus, track storage shed roof and some football field improvements. Some work to the tennis courts and a mower replacement. These items are still in the planning stages. We will be bringing forward a capital improvement plan to be amended. Once we know for sure what we're going to be doing. And then our referendum projects continue to the fall and Jesse's gonna give you a lot more update on that, so I'm gonna just spend less time there. Our referendum finance update, we had a little bit more to go up the door this, in July. $114,000 went out, but we earned $79,000. We had several CDs that matured in the month of July. The expenses we paid out were to ACP Creative IT, which is camera corner, most of us know what is camera corner. Our live business systems and Johnson Control Fire Protection, so pretty much all the July expenses were safety and security related.
All right, any questions for Amber? All right, let's jump into the referendum projects. So we were able to share these photos with the staff members this morning as well during our in-service. And it was great to see the excitement on their faces as they were going through these pictures. So, uh, the first one is the Performing Arts Center. So you can see the new sound system, lights, and ceiling tiles that were installed. It looks fantastic. I cannot wait to have that first music performance, play musical, um, concert, whatever it would be in there. And it's just, it's just a wonderful space, so. Our PE storage throughout the elementary school, you can see the door was widened, um, and then it was expanded into the boys' locker room. Uh, that first picture is looking at it from the gym perspective, looking in. And then the second picture is looking at it from the locker room storage or locker room area, so you can see kind of how large it, um, really is. Again, this was a small, tiny little closet compared to what it was. It is probably, I bet you, 10 times the size of it was, so. Tyler's very excited for that. One thing just to note, we do need to get doors on hopefully this week that will be put on this, so. Uh, the roof at the elementary school, um, so the rubber surface is being finished this Wednesday. And then the metal roof will be installed over the next three weeks. Actually got a text this, um, evening saying that it will be completed within three weeks for sure. So that red area that you see, um, in the first picture there is gonna be covered up with a metal roof, so. Then the second picture you see is the, I believe it's called the flashing, um, that goes all the way around the building to prevent water from seeping in in between the bricks, so. Looking at the plumbing updates at the elementary school, um, we knew this was a large project, um, that is completed. So all the plumbing, the pipes have been, um, replaced at the, this is looking at the basement where it was leaking. New rubber surface on the playground at the elementary school, that work is completed. I highly encourage you to just go out and take a step on it. It's very, feels like you're walking on the moon. That's the best way I can compare it to. I mean, not that I have, but.
I was gonna say, how many times have you walked on the moon?
It's really soft and squishy, so I'm excited to see the kids out there this fall and see what their reaction is when they come back to school.
And that makes it 100% accessible, right?
It does. It does, yes. So no matter what a person's ability level is, they are able to get out there, interact with their peers on the equipment, so. Uh, parking lot replacement up here at the middle school and high school. This picture was taken Friday. So obviously the lines were painted over the weekend, so it's not the most up-to-date photo, but, um, the asphalt two layers were poured, put down, and then the lines have been completed, so. Big thing to mention about this area is the, we had a study, uh, done by Bay Lake Regional Planning. And they recommended the, um, parking arrangements. So we are now going to angled parking here at the middle school and high school with designated handicap spots. There's also an added drop-off lane for families that will be dropping off near the cafeteria doors in the morning, picking up. So, um, this was, uh, it's a little bit of a change, I know, for our students and for our staff and community, especially those at the wellness center. But we feel like this is the best for safety of anyone that's in the parking lot coming into the building, so. I want to talk a little bit about the new track surface. So right now, the two layers of asphalt were poured on the track. Uh, you can see the concrete pads that were put down for the high jump, the long jump, and the pole vault area. We are waiting for Fisher Track to come in mid-September. They're gonna be installing the rubber surface that will go on top of the track as well as painting the lines and the numbers that will go on the tracks, so. These are pictures of our new band room, um, which was our former wood shop area. So you can see new floors were installed, the cabinetry was put back in from the existing band room. And the furniture has been moved in, so, uh, Ms. Massey was hard at work setting up today, um, getting the space ready for kids. Next door to that is the new choir classroom. So you can see again, floors are installed, cabinets are put in, and the piano will be moved in on Wednesday by the piano movers, so. With all the moves around with the different classroom spaces, this room opened up. It's a new special education classroom, um, that is going to be focused on teaching students functional living skills. Uh, there's a area in here, it's got a full kitchen, washer and dryer, um, a restroom with a full shower. So working on those skills that some of the students just need for independence, so excited for this work. Our new AVA spaces, I've got a couple of slides showcasing our new space. This was the former band room, so if you remember, that tiered floor is now level, filled in with concrete. They have their new furniture that arrived last week, was set up and placed. This is the second AVA space, which was the former choir room. And then the third AVA space is what was the little theater. You can see the floor again was filled in, so it is now completely level. That first picture is where the hydroponic units will be installed and put in. You can see the electrical hanging down from the ceiling to support that. And then behind that wall there is a full kitchen, um, that will be accessible to the students, so. Moving on to our tech ed spaces, this is our new wood shop area. Um, we have that wall that was put in over the summer. The airlines have been installed and we are ready to start moving the wood shop equipment back in, so. Next space is our tech ed metal shop area. Um, the walls and ceilings were painted last week. Cleaners were in there on Friday cleaning up the space, and so we're ready for the equipment to get moved in, in there as well. Restroom remodel, we replaced all the fixtures, um, new tiles on the floor and on the walls, and new dividers were installed, so. There are a few restrooms that will need to be redone next summer yet. Uh, just because of the timing, we weren't able to get them all done, um, to make them ADA compliant, so we have a few that will be done, um, next summer yet. New doors and handles, um, are being installed this week right now. So Tri-City Glass has been in, working on that. And we're excited to have a new key system that will be, provide some security district-wide, so. Windows, um, these are the windows that are at the elementary that are replaced by the main office area. Our installers have about 35 windows as of last Friday installed. They're doing about four a day right now. So we have asked for a weekly schedule to be provided to us a week in advance of what windows classrooms will be working on. And that information will be shared out with the teachers or the staff that'll be impacted by that. Staff know that they are going to have to shift maybe for a day or two into a space so they can, the installers can have access to their classroom. Um, and then the secure entrance up here at the middle school and high school. So the frame, um, it's a custom frame that's being built for this area. Unfortunately, is not coming from the manufacturer until mid-October. So we had to put in a temporary entrance for right now. The doors are being put on tomorrow that you see there. But our hope, we have a Friday and a Monday off in the end of October. And so the construction workers will be coming back in October to put the permanent one in. And then lastly, just, I would like to just mention that we are looking at trying to do an open house for the community sometime in the coming months. We want to make sure that the projects are mostly completed. And so we want to showcase all the great things that the community supported in passing this referendum. And we're very proud of, uh, the work that's been done, so.
Looks good. Very exciting.
And the last thing I have is we welcome staff. Yeah?
The rest of the bathrooms that are gonna get fixed next summer?
Yes.
Are those still underneath this referendum project?
They are. Yep, yep. Still under referendum, yep. We have three years for the referendum budget to be used, so, yes. Good question. And then as President Johnson mentioned, we had our in-service today for staff, welcomed about 120 staff members back today. We had a little bit of fun, we did some learning, uh, we played the, if you've ever watched the match game show. We played a El Goma School District version of that. Amber was one of our contestants, came up on the stage. She was brave, and then we had six celebrities, so we had some fun with that. Uh, these pictures here that we're showcasing is our lunch. A big thank you to Moe's for catering and the lunch for us. And we just got to enjoy each other's company on the first day back, so.
Ree was one of our celebrities. Her answers did not match. I tried really hard, but she was.
So definitely a hit. We will be doing that again next year, so it was fun. That is all I have.
All right. Next up is our Building Department Administrator Report, Ms. Rumiya.
So, um, a little out of order and then what's on the agenda? I was just gonna give a brief overview of some staff updates to the special education. As you're aware, quite a few vacancies that we were working hard to try and fill this summer. Happy to announce that Danielle Hensley will be joining us next month with the college. It is his first year at a district, so it will be his internship year. So we will be working with, um, likely Southern Door and their school psychologist, Kenny Rui, has agreed to supervise her. Finishing up that internship year. Lauren, I always say her last name wrong, so you can correct me, Jesse, if I say it wrong, because I don't want to say it wrong.
Buchko?
Yep, you got it.
Okay.
She will be joining us as a fifth grade special education teacher. Jenna Jordan at an elementary education career professional. And then we'll be recommending Naomi Kestner as possibly being a middle school, high school special education career professional starting.
Taken approved, yep.
Additionally, we still have a speech language pathologist vacancy open. Our plan in the meantime, in addition to our full-time SLP in the cochar, is to fill that two days a week with CISA 7. And it actually happens to be a former employee of ours, Ashley Brown, works for CISA 7 now, so she will be returning to the district for two days a week. And then we'll be recommending the contract with Teach Speech, a virtual therapy for the remainder two to three days. So that's a little overview of special ed updates.
I just had a question on Teach Speech. Where do they go? How do they get there? Because you don't have an SLP pulling them, so I'm just curious, the logistics.
So we got to use them last year and actually was highly impressed. They have all local, like, former SLPs from Wisconsin that, like, fill in for short-term needs or smaller J-S loads. And so they're usually from their home or an office and they are able to virtually connect with the students. But depending on the need of a student, um, or their age level, typically they're assigned a staff member to just help them navigate the, the virtual component of that. Last year, I got the opportunity to help out two kindergarten students and it was like the highlight of my week because they got to play games and work on their speech. So like, I was there with them, but they're still doing their virtual therapy, so.
Thank you.
Very individualized. And then in addition to that, of course, we have computers in the. Annually, we have to share the seclusion and restraint report of the school board by October 1st and then I report it to the state by December 1st. This is a number that happens in close based on the needs of the students that come through our door. Seclusion and restraint is something that is never used as a first priority. It's always a last resort in just keeping the safety of our students and our staff at the forefront. So, um, something unique about this last year is, last year was the first year that we had two students at an alternate placement. So because they are students that are still within our presence, um, they are still considered our students and we still report any type of, um, seclusion or restraint that happens at these alternate placements. So that being that from last year, the 2024-2025 school year, um, of the 20 incidents that were reported, there was only three students with community needs. Um, 10 of those were actually outside, not even our staff members. So just an interesting, and that's a number that we've been working to decrease, um, as the years have gone on. We do extensive training in CPI, nonviolent crisis intervention, just to ensure that we're really, we need to have hands on it as possible because we never want to put, you know, our hands on students or seclude them. It's not, it's not necessary. Any questions on that? I know it's kind of an. I know it's kind of an uncomfortable topic, but it's a very, very, uh, curious part of our job. Well, that's all I have.
All right. Just found a table.
The agenda?
No, in the report.
Other report?
Yeah, it's four RD, so four, I think it's supposed to be four. I can share it later. All right, I would thank you for the administrative. Now we're gonna move on to the committee reports, even though again we approve those in consent agenda, we're now gonna call them out and speak a little about to each of them. First, we're gonna start with policy and practice committee meeting on August eleventh. Chrissy?
So Amy, Jessie and I met to go over this. And now that we have this electronic system, we're able to share all one hundred and twenty-two pages with you of everything that we reviewed and not waste paper. So super exciting. We did call your attention to several policies that we wanted you to specifically see the like some larger changes in addition to, you know, capitalizing something. Or say instead changing he, she to them, they, or something like that. So the large ones that we wanted to draw your attention to, we did a, not we, Neola. And then we recommended for your approval, a complete rewrite of the emergency nursing services plan. So that's something that Tori will work with us and gets reevaluated and shared. And Tori's really the owner of that. There was a policy where we had to decide whether the principal or the board can approve early graduation. In that instance, we did select principal because we will not know those students. We would be going to the principal anyway to get that information if they can determine, they can graduate early. So that is the selection we went with there. Five five three zero is about the drug policy and item K is new. It kind of talks about if we perceive that the item is a drug. So even if the package gives the appearance that is, that it is an illegal substance or it is a drug, that was a new addition in there. So even if we're visually looking at it, thinking, you know, that can be a call out that we have a suspicion there. Seventy-four sixty is about energy usage and conservation. We did not select some of the options that are listed in there because we didn't wanna lock ourselves into EV vehicles. There's always an opportunity and, you know, we're doing lots of things with our energy usage and consumption and, you know, just daily living, shutting off the lights, all those different things. But we didn't wanna lock ourselves into specific parts of that policy. And then seventy-five thirty oh two, just talks about the responsibility of our team members to retain texts, instant messengers, other written communications that are not archived by the district. So kind of just awareness for everyone to understand what you need to retain and then information for the staff on what they need to retain as well.
Any questions? Any questions for Chrissy? All right. Thank you. Moving on to the buildings, grounds and transportation committees. Speak on that.
Sure. So we met on August twelfth. Chris Bensh, Mike Sova, myself, Jessie, Dakota Berg and Whitney met. And we basically had some presentations from two companies, corporate associates. It was a virtual one. Not very flattering at all, very. I don't know how to say it, but it was not very in-depth when it came to presenting. It was just kind of a, yeah, we can do this and we can do that. Not really in-depth with anything. Then we had a presentation that they actually came in and presented by point of beginning. Scott, Lindsay and then Kayden, they did an exceptional job. I think that that point of beginning for what they could do for us from basically start to finish was above and beyond any other company that presented so far. You know, and I think that with the ability that they can help out with, with, you know, getting some money. And they helped out with the whole thing, you know?
Fundraising.
Fundraising from the, right from the beginning. The nice thing is, is all of that was no charge until we went into phase two. So they're really, they're really putting their neck out on the line just as much as we are to help us through this thing, so. Yeah, we talked about the football field and then just kind of the whole, the whole overall plan as we go on. But obviously it's in stages and they were aware of that, so. That was pretty much it. Jessie, you have anything to add to that?
Just that everyone, board members should all have a packet or a booklet of what was presented with details in terms of the scope of the project, the different phases, the work that they'll be doing, so.
I think my one question is, which percentage are we going to fall in to for the fees? Four, three and a half, or three? And then into phase three, is it six, five or four? Which grouping are we targeting?
Well, that, that really depends on how far we think we wanna go with it, right?
Okay. So we don't have to lock in and say this is where we're gonna be at? They, they are flexible with their billing.
Correct.
Plus the percentage is also off of your dollar amount too.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what, I didn't know if we don't hit this dollar amount, we're not locked into this invoice, right?
You know, we don't have necessarily a set dollar amount we're looking at right now. You know, it's kind of in the beginning stages of this whole thing and planning and, you know, they came up with some really cool things, you know? They, they bring in this big sheet and have everything to scale and we'd be able to move stuff around and put stuff here, put stuff there. And really, they don't have anything set in stone. So even in that book, when you're looking at it, you know, that's just a, just something that they mocked up real quick to put together a booklet. They're, they're, they're not set with any of that, which is, I thought, really cool. They're looking for our input on that, so.
Because that was my question, I'm like, why don't we combine the concession, concession stand?
Yep.
With the press box and then just have a sep, and the restrooms and just have a separate, separate ticket booth. It might save on building costs, but knowing that we can talk about that more.
They were very open with that.
I'm not gonna hit hard on that now, but.
It was basically one week from when you contacted them.
They put them all of that together in a week.
That's a beautiful, beautiful.
With, with basically no, other than we're looking at doing the football field.
Correct. They had no idea what our facility looked like.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah. And but soccer could also go in there as well and then we could, and lighting, so we can have night soccer games? Wouldn't that be wonderful? So we could have night games for soccer instead of just during the weekend?
And they, they gave us, you know, like, you know, many different options on bleachers and, and the entrances and the concessions and the restrooms.
Just like building your house, there's endless opportunities.
Okay, okay.
Endless options.
Uh, field, they gave us a couple of options on the field. It was, it was really, really impressive and like I said, the coolest thing was there was no money that we had to pay upfront to get this whole thing started.
And the biggest thing that set them apart from the other one was they, they come with the fundraising.
Yeah.
They'll help us from inception till it's done.
That's nice.
And it takes us five years to raise the funds, it takes us five years to raise the funds.
Excellent, oh, that's nice. Moving the football play up here, is that going to provide more home games for our high schoolers?
That's all set for it.
But it could give us regionals.
Correct.
It could give us, I mean, it might not get that because we're eight men, but it could give us the opportunity now for regionals. We can't do that down in Perry Field at the moment because of the dairy. It's not a safe, so it opens that up, which is encouraging. Oh, because that would bring people in. And soccer games, as I said, soccer games could be played on this field as well when I look at it, I'm like, limitless opportunities.
I think there's something to be said too about the school spirit, you know, playing at your school rather than offsite.
Right.
I would just add too, I was at the first football game that we had last Thursday. And very grateful to the city for allowing us to use their space. There is a fee for that, that we have to pay every time we use that facility. So it's an ongoing cost that we as a district are paying. The press box is in dire need of renovations. And so some money needs to be stuck into that, whether we do that now or we are looking at other options, something needs to be done on that. So the sound system, we brought a temporary sound system down there to use for the game. And you could hear it from one, on one side of the game, but you couldn't hear it on the other side. Again, so we're at a point, I think, as a, as a school and as a community, that we need to make some decisions on what the future really holds for football, soccer, track. And now's the time to do that, so.
I know, we're talking about track.
Baseball.
I was gonna say, but baseball's still gonna be played down there, right?
Correct.
So is there a conversation about how do we move baseball up here too?
That's, I think that's all part of that master plan, you know, and then we kind of do things as we, as we go. But I, I, when you're drawing a plan, you have to include that. To not include it, just say, well, let's just put a football field here, whatever. You're not thinking far enough ahead, so.
Correct. Cool.
Any other questions for the committee? All right, then we will move on to the charter school committee meeting on August twentieth. Jeremy?
Yeah, so we met August twentieth. We had myself, Amy, our president, and Mike Sova, also Superintendent Frankman, Principal Horn, Lead Teacher Robinson, and the governance board. We met on a few items here. We discussed the projections for the 2025, 2026 school year. Principal Horn and Teacher Robinson shared that they have thirty-three students that are enrolled in AVA for this upcoming school year with the potential of three more students being added before the start of the year. So that's pretty good news. They're pretty excited, that's in their wheelhouse, they talked about that a few times already. This is the highest amount of open enrolled students in AVA at four students when compared to prior years. We had seven students that graduated last year with a total enrollment of thirty-five students. So if we get those three added, we're at the thirty-six mark. We discussed the annual measures of success for 2526. And the current performance measures are outlined in the existing contract, which they're working on. And that's the next item that we discussed was the contract renewal process. They're gonna go ahead and meet and begin putting a new contract together. They will go ahead and deliver it to us as a board, as a committee first, I should say. We will review it as a committee and then my head asked that we meet with them if we have any questions before it goes, it gets approved. Just so we have a little bit more knowledge on what's happening with that agenda. And then we set a few future date meetings, so it looks like we're gonna be scheduled to meet on Tuesday, November fourth at five PM. And then old business, all we did was just kind of walk through the new AVA space. If you haven't seen it in person and just on the pictures, pictures don't do it justice, I think. Walking through it, it's, it's pretty neat. And it's really neat to see that the school's starting to get a modern look to it, especially like with the bathrooms. The bathrooms were, you know, pretty, pretty out there, but that was it.
Any questions for Jeremy? Thank you. Moving on to new business. I would entertain a motion to recommend to approve the 2024, 25 budget amendments as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Chrissy, seconded by Jeremy. To approve the budget amendments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Entertain a motion to recommend to, to approve the 2025, 2024, 25 seclusion and restraint report.
So moved.
Moved by Chrissy.
Second.
Seconded by Alani to approve the seclusion and restraint report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with Teach Speech for the 2025, 26 school year.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Chris to approve the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Recommend to approve the, yes, I need a motion to approve the survey civil engineering and construction services contract with point of beginning incorporated for the athletic field improvement.
Second.
Moved by Alani, seconded by Chris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, I gotta make this screen bigger so I can see all these numbers. All right, I need a motion to approve the following Neola policies. Zero one zero zero, zero one four four point five, zero one six six point one, one four six one, two four four zero point zero one, two five two two, three one two zero point zero four, three one two zero point zero eight, three four three one, three four three two, four one two four, four one four zero, four two one three, four four three one, four four three two, five one one two, five three one zero point zero one, five four one one, five four six four, five five zero five, five five three zero, seven four four zero point zero three, seven four five zero, seven four five five, seven four six zero, seven five three zero point zero two, eight one two zero, eight four two zero, eight five zero zero, eight five one zero, eight five three one, eight five four zero, eight five five zero, nine one five one.
Okay.
Second. Moved by Mike, seconded by Shannon. All those in favor of approving the follow, the Neola policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, I need a motion for the approval of the Veterans Day concert on Wednesday, November twelfth, and the high school spring concert on Wednesday, May thirteenth. So November twelfth is 2025, May thirteenth is 2026.
So moved, I'll second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Jeremy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Any future items, get them to me or Jessie.
I guess the one thing that I think we should probably, would be a better idea to move is maybe the approval for donations. Instead of bringing up in your president's thing, the donation should, instead of the consent agenda.
You would like them pulled out of the consent agenda?
Should be brought up.
Okay.
I don't think it should be in there, we talked about it last time. Because if it wouldn't have got brought up, you know? I mean, if somebody's donating that type of money, I think there should be some sort of recognition.
That is in policy one six six point one that we approve that the consent agenda will have gifts, grants and donations. So that is a policy update then.
But if you look underneath your policy, what I was reading, it doesn't mean that you have to. I think in the bottom, it doesn't have to go in your consent agenda, right, underneath that bold line?
The board member can request anything to be pulled out from it and deferred to a specific action item.
Correct, and the way that I'm reading that, right?
Well, this isn't, this isn't an actionable item. So it's to pull it up for an action item. You just want recognition on it, which is what last time it happened when we had the donation from Blackie Debray.
Correct.
Or from Lenore Debray. It was recommended that I pull it out and talk about it, so that's why I was doing that.
Correct, I just don't think that it should go in there under that, I think it should be recognized, you know what I mean? So it doesn't, I mean, if, if you forget about it.
Could it be approved on the consent agenda, but just have a note on the agenda saying that we'll recognize?
Or it's another separate line item, I don't know how we wanna do it.
We can do that, we can do that. I mean, we, we can approve it and then, just like we do committee reports, we can have a heading and call it donations. We can do that.
Or a separate line item, whatever.
Absolutely, I think so, that's so easy to put on the agenda.
Somehow another.
Just like we do with your committee reports, we approve those in consent, but then you speak about each of them, so I think that would be.
Somehow so it doesn't get, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is why I'm clear, we're gonna keep it under the consent agenda though for approval, but just speak about it as a separate item.
Correct, and it definitely wouldn't have to go on president's report then, it could have its own line item, very similar to committee reports.
Okay. And that might entice other people to donate too by giving it recognition, so I like it.
But I agree, the recognition is important, these are people that are giving money and in support of the school, it should be recognized.
And if this happens, we'll have a lot more of them, so.
Yes. All right, so we don't need it then as a future agenda item, we solved that problem. But if you have any other ideas, get them to Jessie or myself. We solved that problem, but if you have any other ideas, get up to Jesse or myself. Future meetings, what is our next one coming up? It is September, I wanna say 13th, but I don't think it's that late.
Twenty-second.
September 13th.
September 22nd. It's the next month, October, all right. With that, 7:10, I will adjourn the meeting. Oh wait, no, we need.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Chrissy, seconded by Chris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned. And now we can get a tour.